Welcome to another edition of Cohasset Common, which is a special edition of Cohasset Common, which is tonight, a focus on the town meeting warrant, for annual town meeting, which is on Monday, June 3rd, 7:00 PM at the gym at the Cohasset Middle High School. With us tonight are the two chairs of the two leading committees that go into this meeting. Jeanne Hilly Dipple, the chair of the select board, welcome Jean. And Jean Estino, the chair of the advisory committee, welcome Jean. So I have to be very specific if I point to a Jean, which one I'm talking about.
Exactly. It is a little confusing sometimes.
So, um, so the warrant, uh, which everyone has gotten at home now is 25 or 25 articles. And we're going to walk through the warrant quickly, relatively quickly. And then Kevin has the ability to pop up on the screen, some segments of it, if we want to highlight anything. And he's going to highlight, I think, some of the town resources that are available for anybody who wants to learn more going into Monday night. There's a lot of resources online. Uh, and so I will start with just the first three and then we'll jump into the budget. So, um, to get to this point in, in, in any year, there's a tremendous amount of work that goes behind the scenes. The advisory committee meets for months, the select board meets for months, the capital budget committee meets for months. Um, and, and other committees, in this case, the assessors did some work as well on, on articles. There's other meetings that go on. So there's a school committee works on the budget, their budget. There's a tremendous amount of work that goes in in town many prep. So what, what's presented at town meeting has been vetted extensively by lots and lots of residents and lots and lots of forums. So the first three articles are somewhat, um, regular. So the first one is a recognition article and I'm not going to go through the names. We'll do that on 10 many floor, but there'll people be recognized for a long-term service who've retired. Some folks who have been remembered, who've passed away in the last year, people who, uh, who serve the town. And we'll do that as part of article one. Article two is just the acceptance of the town report that is now available, uh, both in hard copy. If people want to pick it up, it's available at town hall and also I think at the library. It's also online. So if you just want to read it electronically, uh, it's available there. We have copies here. I was just looking at it. So it has lots and lots of information for the calendar year of 23. It's not a fiscal year report, so it's just a calendar year of 23. That's also now available. That'll be article two, the town meeting has to accept that report. And then the reports of committees, I'm not aware of any, I think the select board was talking about doing a report. Uh, the select board's got to do a report. Uh, so there'll be a report from the select board. And, uh, but there won't be any really action. It's really just hearing. So that, that's what article three will be. And then we get to, um, really, I guess, what, what makes the whole rest of the town go, which is article four, which is the operating budget. And, um, I guess I will turn to Jean Hilly Dipple, uh, to give the select board's perspective on this.
I thank you, Chris, and thank you, Chris, for all your work in, in getting us up to this point, uh, right now. So, um, let me step back and say the select board, as Chris alluded to, has spent a lot of time, um, working through the operating budget, including sort of the general overarching direction, as well as, as specific things have come up, trying to work in particular with the schools in a very collaborative way, to try to help make sure that unlike a lot of our neighbors, neighboring towns, we are able to maintain an operating budget without an override. And stay within our meetings and address unanticipated expenses as best we can. And so after quite a few months of some pretty in-depth work, including by advisory, and I won't steal, uh, the other Jean show about that. The select board has unanimously recommended this, this budget, uh, for this year. We have done as a town, thanks to Mr. Senior and others as whether town staff or volunteers, really done a great job managing our finances, particularly on the operating side. We recently were reaffirmed by Moody's, uh, having a triple A rating. And so we're very pleased and we want to stay on course with that. So we do recommend this operating budget.
The advisory committee also recommended the budget, um, unanimously by a vote of eight to zero. Um, we met. I have to say, some of my committee members probably were not pleased, but, um, we met weekly, pretty much since January. And we've gone over and above and through each, each, each item on the budget. And, you know, made our, made our voices heard, asked questions and then went back to the drawing board. Chris was great. He just kept plugging away for us and, you know, sending us what we were looking for so that we were fully informed. So that's my feeling on the budget and every member of the advisory committee. I mean, the advisory committee meets and goes through every single town committee budget. And makes recommendations. So we're pleased that we're at this point. It's been a lot of work and I'm very happy to say we will probably not need another 10:00 PM meeting for quite some time.
But they're fun, Jean. 10:00 PM meetings are great. So.
Yeah, brings me back to my days on that other committee.
So the, um, the, uh, the, the kind of, um, top line numbers are found in appendix A of the warrant. If anybody wants to go and take a look, um, the, the wrapped up town budget is $53 million. There's also a $2.4 million budget for the, um, sewer enterprise fund and a $5.6 million budget for the water enterprise fund. So you roll the whole thing up, it's a little more than $60 million the town spends. The sewer and water are supported by rate payers. So, um, again, there, there's more information available on the town's website. Uh, but that's the, that's, that, that makes the whole town go. So, um, that's article four. Uh, article five this year is unpaid bills of prior year. The, the nice thing is there are none. So we're going to pass right over this article, which is good. Um, we sweated that out a little bit, but it turned out we were all okay. Article six are supplemental appropriations and we're going to recommend three of those. One, and the number that you see in the warrant is going to be a little different than the actual motions because a little more money has come in. So, uh, we'll update that on 10 many floor, but, um, there's a transfer money that comes in from, um, the cable TV companies then gets passed on to Cohasset 143 TV to actually maintain the station and to, to pay its operating costs. So that happens, uh, at the annual special town meetings. And then there's two supplemental appropriations, uh, one for legal expenses, um, that's $75,000 and one for police overtime. That's a hundred thousand dollars. We, we have been short police officers and firefighters for that matter. Well, the police officer's been a little more intense. The good news is we just started two new ones. And so they, uh, if you see them on, on the streets, we have Chase Colasordo, uh, from Nantucket, and then another gentleman just joined us from the academy. So, um, we're, we're in a better place. And there's actually the one new headcount in the budget is an extra line item in the police department because we just need another body. There's just more people in town, there's more things going on. And that should help cut down on the overtime expenses for the future. So, uh, those are the three supplemental appropriations of both committees voted them unanimously. Anything either of you want to add on this?
I don't think so. Um, in the past, I've always questioned the police overtime. But I understand that it's because we're, we typically are short one or two officers at least. So other people have to fill in to cover the gaps. So it's an unintended consequence of not having enough people on the force.
Right. It's something we're working to try to correct and getting out of civil service, which time many approved a year or so, that's really helped our recruiting. So it's been a great, a great benefit. Um, that's article six, recommending unanimously by both select board advisory committee. Article seven, these are contributions to stabilization funds, and these are both, um, top priorities of the town's financial, um, policies. The first one puts, uh, a little more than $2 million into the capital stabilization fund, and that's a, an increase. The select board and advisor committee and capital all said, hey, let's put some more money into that. So we found an extra hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, the second transfers to the OPEB trust fund. Again, this follows an adopted policy, uh, putting money away every year into the OPEB trust fund. That's one of the reasons that we maintain our triple A credit because we're actually paying attention to this long-term expense. Could take a long time to pay down, but we have a plan to do it. Uh, and both of these were also recommended unanimously by, uh, both committees. Either of you want to add anything on that?
I'm good. I think it's self-explanatory pretty much.
Go ahead, Jean. Uh, you're muted.
Excuse me. Um, one of the things the select board did in the budget message this year was, um, requests that we've worked towards, which we have successfully an increase of the capital stabilization fund. As folks may remember, last year, November, at the November election, and as identified in the long-term financial planning report, um, one of the reasons that we found ourselves in a capital crunch, thus necessitating the stabilization funds that we passed last November, was that we had kept the capital stabilization fund flat. While we supplemented that with free cash, we did want to sort of learn from the lessons of the past and try to address that by escalating every year. And so we started doing so this year, and that's why we're seeing the increase in the capital stabilization fund.
You're muted, Chris.
I'm muted. So, uh, thank you for that, uh, Jean. And then, uh, so again, both, both committees recommending unanimously the adoption of article seven. Article eight is the capital improvements budget. This is a long article, uh, without going into great depth. All of the projects in there were heavily vetted. Uh, they were all unanimously supported by the, um, the capital budget committee after review, um, and with some limited exceptions, which we can go into in more depth, um, with the exception of a couple of, uh, recusals for various reasons. They were pretty much unanimously supported by both boards. The, the one area where it's a little, and again, there's things in here, there's, there's bus leases and vehicle replacement plans for the police and fire, which are part of our regular, uh, plan. There's replacements for technology for the schools. There's an upgrade to the HVAC system. We have to do a replacement at the, at the senior center that there's been some challenges. We have to get that system replaced. That's the actually single biggest, uh, number in here. And then there's money that is flowing through the, 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 a special purpose stabilization funds, the voters approved last fall are now being spent. So a big chunk of that money in roads and sidewalks is going right into roads and sidewalks this, this spring and into the summer. And then another big chunk is going into, uh, some work at the schools and also being put away, uh, for the expected repair of roofs. I think it's the Oscar group that's coming up next. The town has applied for, um, the mass school building authority to take part in a program that will get us some additional funding. So, um, so the, the, the money that the voters have approved is already going right into major projects. So, um, the, the one that, that's been a little bit of the more intense discussion are projects, um, 18, 25 and 26, which involve, um, work to be done on, on town hall. Um, the, the roof, um, getting some repairs done to the roof. Uh, and then also studies on both, um, access, there's, uh, rules about, um, disability access for the buildings. Uh, and also for the fire suppression system. There is no fire suppression system there historic side of the building. So, uh, these proposed projects will fund that study, they'll fund that fire suppression, uh, plan, uh, not the actual work, but the plan for it. And then do the roof, uh, which has been something that's been on the list for quite a long time. I know both committees, uh, worked hard at this. Now, still part took the lead in actually getting this stuff, uh, into the warrant. So Jean, if you want to, uh, Jean, Jean Hilly Dipple, if you want to start and give a little more background.
You're muted.
Yep. I just saw that. Um, so I, I won't go through everything, but I am going to highlight, um, three areas. The roads, the school items and the town hall, as Chris just, um, gave a brief overview. So with respect to the roads, we do have a road stabilization fund of $800,000. We are proposing to use, um, that fund, that amount of money plus, um, a little bit more to, uh, from the upcoming fiscal year to, uh, repave South Main Street, a part of Beechwood, part of Pond as well, which will receive, uh, mill and overlay paving, um, but I believe also ADA compliant sidewalks. We are also going to assess the construction of a future sidewalk from Pond Street, um, on Pond Street, excuse me, from Route 3A to King Street to connect that segment, which is a heavily trafficked area. And we're also using portions of the funds to, uh, limited portions to look at safety measures such as, um, sharrows in the heavily trafficked area. So those are the current plans. Now, uh, a lot of this is based on the estimates in terms of how much we believe this amount, these amounts will cost. Again, estimate, so we do have to maintain some flexibility on that, but, um, our hope is to get that work done over the upcoming year. So that's as it relates to the roads. As it relates to the schools, there is sort of your customary, um, replacement of equipment and, uh, maintenance projects, but then there are the bigger ticket capital items that we're talking about, the alarm repair, the re-tiling, the more infrastructure style projects that will come out of the capital, the, excuse me, the school special stabilization fund. Now, um, these projects do not amount to the 1.5 million, um, for each fiscal year that the, uh, voters voted on. And the reason why is Chris just, um, referred to was because we applied to the Massachusetts School Building Association to redo the roof. And a part of that application requires the town to be ready and prepared with funds if we get into that program, which can give us up to 40% reimbursement. So if the school's roof costs multiple millions and we can get 40% back, that's huge savings that we can repurpose into that fund, but we have to set aside that money in order to be eligible for the program. So we're really trying to leverage the school stabilization funds to, um, you know, make them work as best we can, including to get state grants. So that's, uh, just a little context on the school funds. And then finally, with respect to town hall, um, here where the select board is, and we voted unanimously, um, on all of these, uh, for those who were present to the extent it was a four oh vote, it was because we didn't have, um, certain folks present for those particular meetings. But with respect to the town hall here, what we're really trying to do is asset preservation. There have been some competing proposals and visions out there of what's going to happen next with our town hall. And there's been no definitive plans. Um, we've been talking about creating a working group. Once town meeting is done, depending on what happens with these articles, to move forward with, uh, a plan for town hall. A part of the analysis here is whether we do any sort of really relocation, partial or full or temporary. What does that look like? Where can we go? And then of course, there's always the question of cost. There has been, um, a group of citizens that have come before us with, um, some very interesting ideas. They, they are the various nonprofits in town that have been long established here, including the Cohasset Historic Society that want to partner with the town. Um, but we're still working through that to see if there's a viable proposal. And that would entail some largely private funding, um, depending on how the project turns out. So the goal here is to preserve the town hall and prevent further damage to it or disrepair by really starting on the roof and fire suppression areas that we know are going to need replacement or repair no matter what, but also not go so far down the line. Because if we do something different later on, including, let's say with private funding, we don't want to throw money away. We don't want to repair something that might become a totally different idea six months from now. So we're trying to be very careful about how we proceed here. And we do think, um, after having conversations with various stakeholders, that the roof is something we're going to need no matter what. Fire suppression is something that, um, we're going to need no matter what. And so we know no matter what happens with the building, um, that is, is definitely a worthwhile investment. And even then, these are estimates, as, um, many who have gone to town meeting know, we've had a lot of difficulty ensuring our estimates come in on track when they go out to market. We've done a lot of diligence and hope that these will, based on what we're being told by participants within the market. But they are estimates, and so we're going to strive to meet them, but, um, you know, if nothing else, there'll be a down payment towards this future work if they come in higher than expected. But, but we're hopeful that we'll be able to get the work done.
Anything else you want to add, Jean? Estino?
Yes. Uh, just that on this warrant article, advisory did not, we recommended approval by a vote of seven, zero, one, and that one was just an abstent, abstention. It was not an against vote. Because that person wanted to eliminate a possibility of a conflict of interest. We did recommend approval by a vote eight, zero on projects two through 17 and 19 through 24. Our recommendation for projects on 18, 25 and 26 are noted as being approved or recommended at annual town meeting because, um, we were behind the warrant. And the time for, the time for printing the warrant had passed by the time we voted. So this was by no means a, a negative. It's definitely a positive or moving in the right direction. And we will vote prior to town meeting so that we can discuss it in full if people have questions. But we are definitely supportive of the roof. Um, we had extra questions. We could have probably voted the week before, but we had a few more questions and we went back to the information pool experts, um, just to make sure that we had all of the, all of the figures downright for what the expectations are for the roof and for it to go forward and be, um, to be safe and appropriate and done correctly from day one and not have to go back to the, back to the well to fund more at a later time. So we are working towards that and people were, um, very supportive also on advisory of that particular item, those, all three of those items.
Okay. Um, I think there you've heard a fairly thorough review of, uh, big chunks of, of the, the capital plan, which again, went through a lot of conversation. So I will again, return folks if they want to watch any of the videos or any of that, there's links on the town's website. If you click on the annual town meeting link up top of the, the main page, uh, there's all kinds of materials there for you to look at. So, um, uh, that, that, that is the capital plan. So a big, big chunk of money, well-funded and well, well, uh, well-vetted. Article nine, our allocation of funds for one-time costs, these are things for which they're just, it's not like a capital expense. It's more usually project-based, but sometimes it's the thing. Um, and there are a few of these. I'll walk through them quickly. The town is investing a lot of funds. That means there's more projects going on and, and we, we need to have more project management support for that. And, uh, the select board said, make that a priority. So we have some money in here, $95,000 to do that. Uh, right now, our public works director, Brian Joyce thinks the, that we might be able to do that through just retaining folks rather than hiring them. But we're going to make a judgment call. So if we end up, it's more cost-effective to hire an engineer for a couple of years to do this, that's what we'll end up doing. But at this point, it's probably going to just be services as projects ramp up. We have the recreation projects. We have that public safety building on 3A, which is coming, and then additional work at the schools. So, uh, it's going to be really important that we do our internal due diligence on those. That's going to require more hands-on work. There's, uh, increased funding for the reserve fund, something that both the advisory committee and the select board said we needed to do. And that's an extra $30,000 in here coming out of free care. There's, uh, a chunk of money here to cover what is a projected, uh, gap for the FY25 school special education budget. There were some significantly increased costs that are affecting every district actually in, in, in eastern Massachusetts. And because of the variability of this, it just made sense to plug this whole, uh, there's a, it, it may be they'll need less. So if they don't need all this money, then I'll just revert, uh, revert back to free cash to be able to spend, be spent on something else. That said, this is the amount of money that they, 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 they expect they'll need at the max. Uh, so that this will plug any, any gap that they'll have in FY25, uh, based on current projections. The, uh, the next chunk is for, uh, some additional cemetery maintenance coming out of a fund that's developed from the sale of cemetery graves and plots. So, uh, that's a rational, it's the most logical place to pull it from, but you have to have a 10 many vote to do that. There's $225,000, which is coming out of retained earnings, which is kind of like the free cash equivalent that sewer department has. They'll fund a, an asset management grant, but the town is going to get back 100, the sewer department, $135,000. So you have to prepay and then the state reimburses 135. This is going to be an important element for their long-term capital plan development to doing this big asset management grant survey. Uh, the next is to repair a sewer line. It's an old line at the back of Deer Hill School has put a, a bathroom out of commission. Uh, the only time we get this work done is over the summer. So this will help fund, this will fund that project over the summer. It's a, a small project that'll have to bring a contractor in for. And then, uh, this is a small one, but it is important. Uh, the town did receive some fine money for people who illegally took down some trees in the public way. Uh, so in order to, to, to put this money back into the best place, this will put the $1,500 equivalent back into the, the tree bank revolving fund, which was set up a few years ago. So that'll, that'll be available to buy new trees. So, um, both of the committees voted unanimously to recommend both of the, uh, this article. Uh, either of you have anything you want to add?
I'm, I don't have anything to add.
Jean?
So just real quick on the reserve fund and the fund, um, project management services. So as folks probably know, last November, town meeting and at the ballot, our residents voted to deploy a significant amount of additional capital investment into Cohasset, which was wonderful and we appreciate your support there. It had, it, but it also means that we're attempting to likely do twice as much because we now have more money. And so we wanted to make sure that we were effectively and responsibly deploying that money. And so we did want to put in, um, more money into the budget this year to make sure that we were managing those projects. You know, we have things like the police and fire station coming up. That's going to be a huge generational project for Cohasset. So we want to make sure that we have the appropriate bandwidth there as well as the rec projects. The capital stabilization funds, the school and the roads, you know, that's going to yield a whole bunch of work. The school repair project itself, uh, excuse me, the, um, roof repair could be a very substantial project. So, uh, that's just to provide some context there. And then with respect to the reserve fund, just like what we did with the capital, um, stabilization fund here, I believe advisory requested, uh, rightly so, that we increase the reserve fund and not just keep it at a flat amount of 200,000. Because typically what happens is at the end of the year, um, at least it did when I was on advisory, you will get requests for, let's say something happens and you need to, you know, do an emergency capital fix. Well, things are getting more expensive now, and so it makes more sense to have a little more flexibility in the reserve fund to handle those unanticipated expenses. And if we don't use it, it just reverts back to free cash anyway. So all it does is buy a little more flexibility for us as a town to handle these unanticipated emergency expenses that, that do pop up, including on the capital front.
Okay. Thanks. Uh, so I think that's a, an example of the very thorough discussions that took place over the last couple of months that built this. So, um, article nine, recommended unanimously by both the select board and the advisory committee. Article 10 is just an annual update. Uh, these revolving funds are in the town's bylaws, but the, uh, state law requires an annual, uh, check on the spending limit. This is not changing from last year. All of these funds that are in there are from the past. Uh, and they're just being reaffirmed and they're both recommending unanimously. There's kind of a housekeeping article, I'd say. Either of you want to add on that? I think with housekeeping. Uh, article 11 is a little different. We're actually adding two more new ones, uh, to our, to this section. One for library programs. Historically, the library hasn't charged for any program. So this is kind of new. But they've actually just started a very successful passport program, uh, and they're making some revenue from it. But they'd like to be able to keep that revenue in the library to spend on library programs, which seems reasonable. Uh, but the only way to do that is to set up a revolving fund. So it's, it's this new money, doesn't affect anybody else's budget, but it will allow the library to do some extra things internally, which is, makes sense. In terms of, um, permitting inspections, we, we do get, we've, we've got, we're getting more and more specialized inspection services. That's electrical and plumbing and gas and the special fees that come in for those. You pay a separate fee. And then usually we pay a separate fee back out to people to do those things. So this will keep those in a kind of revolving fund as well. So the money that comes in goes back out. Uh, that's pretty much how those, those work. So, um, this doesn't affect the general permit fees and all, which still get, uh, go into the general revenue. This is like a niche amount. And, and while we don't expect 50,000 in any given year, you never know that if there's a big project, you know, you can have some fairly extensive expenditure, expend, expenditures for expenses. I'm sorry, for inspections, expenditures for inspections. Um, and, um, that's what, uh, that would set up. So, um, anything for, both boards recommend this unanimously as well. Uh, either of you want to add anything? Okay. Uh, article 12, again, another housekeeping article. Anytime the town does any work in the chapter 91 area, and that's area that's kind of in the intertidal lands, um, and that, that needs to be, um, that needs to be, uh, we have to indemnify the state. So this is an annual article because you never know. We may do, we may do C wall work. We may get a state grant. We just did the program, your boat ramp. Those are all things that involve this and we need to, uh, to adopt this article and do any work in those intertidal lands. Uh, again, in-house recommendation, it's an annual housekeeping article. Article 13, well, it's annual is really important. This renews a series of. Article thirteen, well, it's annual is really important. Th- this renews a series of uh tax exemptions, uh real estate tax exemptions for uh uh veterans, uh the elderly people who are income challenged. There's a whole lot of uh the package of those in there. And they need to be uh renewed every year. And that's a, again, a recommendation unanimously uh set by both select board advisory. And then the next one, Article fourteen, is a recommended expansion uh of of those eligible to take part in the tax deferral program. That's where people can defer taxes. Usually it happens uh near uh the time when folks are, you know, typically a little older and looking to sell a house or move on. And it allows them to buy a little time. There's interest the town collects, which is great. It gives the uh the the folks who are selling a little breathing window. Uh, but the cap for income used to be fifty-one thousand. This will allow it to go to sixty-nine, which is the state max. And the assessors have unanimously recommended that. And the select board and advisor committee also recommended that income uh limit be raised to the max of sixty-nine thousand dollars. Either of you have want to add anything on this? Okay, uh again, all unanimously recommended. Article fifteen is the community preservation committee's recommendations, and uh there are um, the routine uh, uh routine allocations. Every year, ten percent of the expected income has to go into three different funds. That's open space recreation, historical and com- and community housing, which is really affordable housing. Uh, and a little bit can go into administrative subaccount that pays for minutes and legal fees where they need to be done. And they've approved five projects this year, or recommend, I should say, five projects at town meeting. Um, one is to uh support the Paul Pratt Memorial uh Library's Pavilion Project with another hundred thousand dollars. Another is to give him ten thousand dollars to um improve the HVAC system for historical preservation of materials and documents at the Historical Society. Uh, a little less than thirteen thousand dollars for archival storage of documents. Uh, and a little less than nine thousand, which will pay for a hydration station. Those are those bottle fillers and things which are great, since uh an article later in the morning is gonna recommend the elimination of single-use disposable plastic water bottles. Uh, this would actually provide a water source for for kids and adults at Barnes Field to easily refill their water bottles with clean filtered water. Uh, and then the last is to support a a pergola addition to improve the outdoor space at Wilka Commons. Um, the last one is just to eh to extend the use of funds that's already been approved for conservation restriction. And that's just taking a very long time for the state uh to approve the actual language effect. I just got it back the other day and we're in the process of hopefully wrapping it up. But this just buys a little more time, just in case. Um, these are recommended unanimously by the um community preservation committee and both the select board advisory committee. Uh, anything either of you want to add?
Um, on projects four and five, uh, we did have a seven to seven zero one. Um, sorry, recommended approval. Recommended unanimous approval on four and five and seven zero one for projects one, two and three. And again, that was an abstention. It was not a nay vote.
Jane, Haley, Dipple, I think? No, yes.
No, no, the um, you know, we, the select board has a representative on the community preservation committee. Uh, and so, you know, we were comfortable, including based on his ongoing participation uh in there, in that process. Um, so no, you don't have anything to add.
And while it was funded last year, uh, the 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 money that was allocated through CPC funds for tennis courts and the beachwood, those are all going to affect now. So um, there's the, if anyone's been seeing the regular updates to the select board, um, the the projects are out to bid now, and we're actually excited about work being done this summer. So that we'll have a new playground, new tennis courts for the fall. So uh it's very exciting. Actually, the tennis courts may take a little bit longer, but uh, that's that's the plan. So um, it's gonna be CPC money, which is classed as tax dollars at work. Um, the next six articles. Um, so that's a big chunk of the warrant now, but now we're gonna go into the next six articles are all zoning changes. Um, and I guess we could break them into two pieces. Um, there's uh, one, which if you don't mind, we can jump to separately as the MPT zoning, I think, which is a little different. And the others are all um are all kind of amendments and updates. Um, I mean, eh, the first few are really just amendments. Uh, Article sixteen. Article seventeen are really kind of revisions and consolidations. They're not substantive, really. Uh, that's my understanding. I think everyone is, by the way, these have both been supported unanimously across the board, planning, zoning, select board advisory. Uh, they're they're really continuing the process that's gone over the last couple of years to to modernize the town zoning code and to streamline it, make it easier to use. So that's really what Article sixteen and seventeen are. Yeah, if I want to take them both together, either of you want to talk more about either one of these uh or or just the general process about reviewing these zoning articles?
I can jump in if you want me to start. Other, Jean, Gina Stino. Um, so I I I would add to that list too, Chris, eighteen and nineteen. So I'll start with Article sixteen. So just by way of background, the select board has been, as one of its goals for the town, based on feedback we received during our elections and from constituents, um, when we're out there campaigning is that uh zoning is definitely an area where we need to focus on. As Tom Callahan, the chair of the so of the zoning bylaw committee that the select board appointed has pointed out, it's been decades since our zoning bylaws have been um changed. And candidly, it shows in Cohasset, particularly when you get friction um with certain developments. Oftentimes, that's a result of Cohasset lagging behind. Um, updates in the law, updates in um how zoning has evolved, including to protect the character and nature of neighborhoods that we all enjoy within Cohasset. So where we are um as a practical matter is we continue, we the town, continue to work with our land lawyers uh that we've hired. Um, and we continue to do sort of the housekeeping work that Chris alluded to. Article sixteen is really a consolidation to make the law, the laws that we have um more organized and easier to follow and easier to enforce and apply. We did half of them or a a portion or fraction of them at the last town meeting. Now we're doing other parts of them. So we really need to have one unified set of bylaws. So that's Article sixteen. Article seventeen through Article nineteen, these are the consolidation of districts. So as a practical matter, when you're sitting on the planning board, which I have done previously, um you're dealing with to all different districts that have the same laws, but they go by different names. What we're proposing to do here is just to unify them into the districts that we all know um that have the same effective requirements, but just call them one district. For example, there's one real district for three A. There's one real district for the harbor, and there's one real district for the village. And we've had a patchwork that's evolved over the years. I don't know why, but it has, and it's confusing. Um, and it's disorganized. And so based on um advice we've gotten from our lawyers, as well as just the practicalities of using and enforcing and implementing these various districts. Um, we're really trying to modernize and make our zoning laws organized and efficient and um uh just more readable as well. So uh, that's the quick summary for Article sixteen through nineteen.
Uh, so those uh, the eh eh is all of the text for those are in ver- are are electronic. Uh, and we're going to have at council's recommendation packet available at town meeting uh for anyone who wants to, you know, we weigh through the details. We're gonna uh get those printed out as well. So people will have them. But if you want to look at any of the texts, that there's links to all of it online. Um, and anyone wants to learn more, there was a zoning forum on May thirteenth. Uh, a public forum. Uh, there's a link to that on the town's website and a couple of locations. Uh, it's on the town's YouTube page too. You can go right there if you want. And uh, there was a whole big co- public conversation. So you can learn all you wanted to know about all of these articles, including what you just went through um, at that forum. So um now that to, those are the first four. The next one uh is the implementation of the MBTA communities legislation. Um, would you like to take a crack at that first, Jean?
Sure. So um, this is the implementation of the new state law that was um recently passed that requires communities that live or I should say that have state MBTA stations to implement multifamily housing zones that allow a developer, a builder, um, a property owner to develop multifamily housing as of right. That means they automatically with certain restrictions set forth in the law, have the right to build multifamily housing. And if we re- if the town declines to pass this article, then we are potentially going to lose state funding and or be subject to a lawsuit by the attorney general, um as other towns have been. Um, so tho- that's sort of the big picture. Now, when it comes to Cohasset, we are in um a potentially more attractive spot than other communities. And the reason why is that um, in order to comply with this law, and we've hired a housing consultant that we go to grant for to ensure that we can comply with this law, um, you have to pick parcels that would fit within the parameters of the law. The parcels that um the housing consultants recommended, and they recommended a few areas. We picked this particular one, which is up near Hingham Lumber. It's up on that area as well as the land uh across the street near JJ's, near the pool shop, near the big transit-oriented development that has the fitness club, Olympus Grill, the workstation, all of those buildings. Um, that parcel is eligible to fit within the law for us to zone that is multifamily. Um, and the, we view that as a good parcel because it's close to the train. And so to the extent that people um, eh development comes, they'll have easy access, but it's also not gonna be smack dab in the middle of an otherwise residential neighborhood somewhere. Um, it, it's already a place where we have multifamily, where we have significant housing development through the preserve. Um, and there's large parcels of land up there. The downside that the board has in fact struggled with is the infrastructure demands that will happen if we do get a large development in that's um akin to the size of another preserve. Um, certainly that could have a development, that could have an infrastructure impact on Cohasset, and that's what a lot of communities are concerned about. And and so are we. Um, at the same same time, when we did have the preserve come in, there was a lot of concerns about the infrastructure impact and eh including on the school system and the population. And um, we did not eh in fact have that impact that we thought we were going to. So it's a little bit of a wait and see to see what happens in terms of if we pass this um bylaw, will it in fact get developed? Right now, Hingham Lumber, for example, is sitting on that piece of land. And uh, I don't have any reason to believe that Hingham Lumber is going anywhere. These are businesses that are vibrant and they're part of our community, but they could be eligible to be developed under um, this bylaw for multifamily housing if town meeting passes it. And so as we sort of weighed the ups and downs of this choice before us, including potentially losing state funding that we do rely upon, uh, the select board unanimously voted um to move forward, although we did have one abstention.
I think Gina Stino.
It was four zero one, one abstention.
Uh, and and I think Gina Stino, that uh, that advisor can make him the same conclusion.
We, yeah, we did. We voted unanimously eight zero for this um for this bylaw change, our redefinition, for lack of a better word. Um, I have to say that the planning board work is endless. And I think that they did a great job consolidate with the consolidation of wording, taking two and making one. Uh, eh, they did a a very good job and the work continues. It never ends on us. So working with the the legal counsel, I think, was a great thing for them. They were able to pass these things by um, legal and make sure that everything was on the up and up and where it needed to be. So it was an easy thing to vote for, actually.
Okay, so that's uh, again, another unanimously with uh Jane Hillary Dipple's note that there was one abstention. Uh, Article twenty, MBTA zoning uh was re- is recommended across the board. Um, the um, again, more information is available on the town's website uh on that as well. Article twenty-one is is a little bit more of a substantive change. And this increases parking requirements. And there's, there was a a good, healthy public conversation, particularly from the select board about this. And again, I'll turn to Jean Haley Dipple to talk more about that.
Sure, thank you, Chris. So um Article twenty-one largely just tries to conform with the zoning updates that were made at the last town meeting to ensure that um this article carries out some of the changes made previously. Um, there are some changes to the village parking requirements. Um, there in some, uh, the board working with the zoning bylaw committee wanted to see that there were certain increases in the amount of spaces that were required when developing um projects, particularly residential projects. Parking in the village is very, very tight, as many know. Um, and it's grown more tight over the years because we've had a lot of success revitalizing the village. We've had a lot of restaurants come in, new businesses, which is fantastic. Um, and so we are trying to balance that by ensuring we also have sufficient parking and that we don't have residential projects that come in that don't have sufficient parking because what will happen is that parking overflow will go and take up public parking spots that the businesses and others need to maintain their clientele. Um, the select board also got feedback from the uh town meeting, which we took note of with respect to the one Pleasant Street project. Queering whether there was sufficient parking uh, given the apartments above there, as well as the commercial use on the first floor. That sort of illustrates some of the back and forth that we hear on parking and whether there's sufficient parking. For example, for a property of that size with that amount of residential units in units on the first floor. And so that really is potentially example A of the feedback that we've gotten about. Do we have requirements in place that contains sufficient parking requirements? So that is um when you look at the off-street parking standards with respect to the village, um, we did request and um all of the groups agreed to um increase the parking requirements when you have those sort of larger residential units. Typically, they're larger coming into the village to increase the parking spaces required per unit in order to ensure that we weren't um, that we we were requiring that folks build an appropriate amount of parking spaces. So that's, that's where the select board is and we voted five zero.
Anything you want to add on that one, Gina Stino?
Um, no, this is pretty complex. I that, I will say that. There is a diagram in the warrant that that explains the parking requirements and the sizes of the spaces. And I, I can only imagine that it, someone lives in the village. It's difficult to find a space if they're a renter. So I think that this will help all of that. And we did vote unanimously eight zero to support this.
Okay, that's that's uh Article twenty-one, the parking uh zoning amendment. And then the last zoning um article is number twenty-two, which adds a a border zone in the village and the harbor. And again, I'll turn to Jean Haley Dipple first on this.
Sure. So um, this goes along the lines of also getting feedback. Ladies, I'm getting some glare. Um, so uh, the board has gotten a lot of feedback in terms of trying to ensure that our um village and harbor zones are consistent with the character of the neighboring residential zones. And what the buffer zone is meant to do is to sort of have, and and this is a concept that's used in zoning, including um, it's been adopted. Our town planner actually brought us, Lauren Lind, brought this suggestion to us as we were trying to figure out um, all different sorts of uh updates that we should do. She suggested this buffer zone idea, which um allows for a more graduated development. And so you're not dealing with a house and then like a huge towering development right across, right against the property line. You know, there are some examples of this. When you look at uh, the, the lines between, for example, the harbor and the residential uses. If you want to see an example, you can just walk down Elm Street. And I think that some of the feedback is there's a desire to make it a little more gradu- graduated, to be more harmonious in terms of the adjustment from the residential to the commercial. And so that's in part what uh, the select board was trying to respond to. As well as, you know, those on the zoning bylaw working group, trying to figure out how to still enable that commercial development, but make it um, more harmonious to the adjacent neighboring and neighbors and residences.
Thank you, Jane. And Gina Stino, anything to add on that?
We also, and on advisory, voted unanimously to recommend this article. And for people who are watching today, who haven't read through the whole warrant on pages thirty-two and thirty-three, there are actual actual measurements that support this article and speak to, you know, sides of, sides of buildings, height of buildings in the various zones. So I think that that's helpful for people visually to be able to see what this is all about.
And Chris, I would just add, um, the informational summary reminded me, me of this. On Route three A, that those zones, we do have a buffer zone already. It's a hundred foot buffer zone. So if you, for example, live in Fair Oaks, you have a hundred foot buffer zone. That does not currently exist right now in any of the village or harbor zoning. And so a hundred feet is a long way in tight neighborhoods. So to Jean's point, we were trying, I think the goal was to try to figure out what's the right amount of feet, given the need for the buffer, but also the tight space. So we do already have a buffer zone in Cohasset on the three, in the three A area. So part of this is replicating that concept.
And, and again, this really mostly is kind of applied to, to redevelopment. There's not a lot of new development that's going to take place in this, in this location. That said, as we've seen, there's definitely been redevelopment in some locations and, and this is going to have an impact. So this is, this is going to be not for what's been built, but what would be built. So that's the point of all of these conversations. It's not just what Quest looks like today, but what it will look like, the goal for it to look like in the years ahead. So those are articles sixteen through twenty-two, a comprehensive set, which I guess you could break into three pieces. There's the kind of updates, there's the MPTA, and then the, the, the two last ones are, are substantive changes to try to improve the code, to bring it into compliance, or I should say, into better harmony with where people want to be today. So the, again, more information on the website, there's links for the, for that forum, which took place uh, earlier this month. Uh, and there's definitely, you can go and watch the zoning and planning hearings if you like, uh, more information on either of those. Article twenty-three, uh, this is a, a proposal to adopt a noise control bylaw, and which may be surprised, that was most certainly surprised to me when I finally dug into this. Quest did not have, or I should say, does not currently have a noise control bylaw. There are some limits to how things are done in certain locations. When the planning board sometimes puts restrictions when you're doing a big subdivision, or a big site plan, I should say. But for the most part, there aren't. And um, in in the world today, with more and more contractors coming in, it's becoming a little harder to, to, to just be good neighbors. So this, this ordinance, uh, which was uh, created at the direction of select board after, and you know, some residents had said, hey, what can we do here? It was modeled by Hingham. Hingham's had a very successful bylaw, which they vetted very heavily. It doesn't involve decimeters, it involves reasonableness, which is a lot easier standard. Uh, and, and it most importantly is, is really a time limit. Those are very easy to understand. You can only do certain things in certain times. Uh, so what's in here is again, is that with some tweaks, the select board did vet this and tweak things. Is, is an opportunity to allow for enforcement, uh, reasonable enforcement limits, uh, when people are doing really construction and contracting noise. It's not, you know, it's, it's not meant for someone, you know, raking their leaves or, you know, cutting their own grass. As long as you're not doing it at two o'clock in the morning. So uh, uh, anything that either one of you want to add? And again, I'll start with Jean Haley Dipold.
As Chris alluded to, uh, we have had lots of feedback over the years, including recently on really complaints about people operating at doing very, various noisy things at times that many would consider to be an unreasonable hour. But we do not have any laws in place to tell that person, at least a local bylaw in place to um, enforce the, in, enforce a bylaw. And so we did look at Hingham, we looked at um, some other towns as well, but Hingham seemed to fit better. We tried to consider both the, the time period in terms of whether that would be reasonable. We, we had people on the board who were early risers and people who go to sleep late and trying to figure out, you know, for those of us who have to, you know, do our work early or do our work when we come home, what would be reasonable um, in terms of limitations there for sort of your average homeowner, as well as landscapers who are trying to hit a bunch of houses all at once. As well as the commercial, the construction activity that occurs. We also look closely at the exemptions that existed to make sure we were, we were covering the areas that for example, u- utility trucks during emergencies, things, things like that, that we would want that noise to be there to help us get through something. Or if it was otherwise permitted by the select board, for example, we may do an event, like for example, the Soul Shore upcoming art festival, where we might allow an entertainment license up to eight thirty or nine o'clock at night. Those would be exempt. So we did try to look at it from all different angles to make sure we weren't necessarily impacting any ongoing sort of long approved activity, or any public safety activity, or any activity that most people would find within sort of the normal realm of when you would anticipate hearing noise, i.e. during sort of the the morning, um, and then until sunset. So that was the, the rationale there.
And Gina Stino, anything from the advisory committee?
Advisory recommended this by a vote of eight to zero. And I have to say, we've lived here almost thirty-five years, and I was shocked when this discussion started, because I've been telling people for all thirty-five years that they can't start to do work before seven. I mean, we had work done on our home, and I told them, don't show up here before seven o'clock in the morning. And you need to finish before dinnertime, which this is a little bit more generous than that. I will say that there was some chit chat on Facebook. And I would state that if you really want to make a difference, the town is not run on Facebook. You need to step up, you need to volunteer and get involved in these conversations in another way. And there's a right way and a wrong way to do things. And I think that this is a great start. And I did say that to someone at the beginning. You know, maybe, maybe it will change. As I said, planning board is working diligently on all of these items. And they may decide to change this going forward. We don't know that at this point, but this is a great start.
Okay. Uh, so again, the, the proposed first comprehensive noise control bylaw by the Town of Glass, that's Article twenty-three, again, recommended unanimously by the select board, the advisory committee. The last two articles on the warrant this year are citizens petitions. And Article twenty-four is actually the only one on the warrant where there's a division of opinion between the select board and the advisory committee. So uh, Article twenty-four would ban the sale of single-use plastic water bottles of less than a gallon for just plain water. It's not for carbonated beverages or flavored waters or any of that. It's just kind of what you'd find a spring water or other water in, in, in a plastic bottle of less than a gallon. Doesn't mean you can't have them, you just can't buy them in the Town of Glass. It's, I should say, you can't sell them in the Town of Glass. This is a model on a, a bylaw that was adopted in Hingham and in other communities and other parts of the state. The one difference here is that the select board voted three to two not to recommend this article. And the advisory committee voted eight to nothing to recommend this article. So in this case, I'll start with Jean Estino first, and then I'll go to Jean Dipold for the second part. So Jean Estino, what did the, what did the advisory say? Yes, eight to nothing?
I think that we're all concerned about ecology and trash in the ocean, and there's a lot of plastic that goes places that it doesn't belong. And we, we just felt that this was, this was a good move to make. I can't make it any more complicated than that. We did have a good discussion on it, and we just decided that it's not a bad thing to control this. And most people carry around water bottles. I never leave the house without one in my car. And I really, I think three times, not just twice, I think three times before I stop in a store and buy a plastic water bottle. I, I just, and my kids are like that, my husband's like that. We do not buy plastic bottles. So we think that it would be good for everybody. That's it in a nutshell.
The, I think it was a good conversation. And on the select board, Jean Haley Dipold, there was a, also a robust conversation and a, and a close vote the other way.
Can I just add one?
Oh yeah, sure. Go ahead, Jean. I'm sorry.
We've already banned plastic, plastic grocery bags. This seems to be the, the, the next logical move in the right direction. And I, I have to say, the, the plastic bags, making benches out of plastic bags was genius. And we've already got one of those benches, and there was a second one in the works. If we can repurpose things like that and, and not deforest to build wooden things, I mean, it's a win-win situation.
Okay. Thank you, Gina Stino, uh, and Jean Haley Dipold of the select board.
So we had a vote of three to two. Um, I am one of the two. I'm in the minority. And I don't want to speak for the majority, but I will try to channel some, summarize some of what they, uh, they stated. Um, and I'm sure that they will do so more fulsomely at town meeting. But I think there was a concern about, well, we ban water, but we don't ban other beverages that are in plastic bottles. That seems unfair. If we're really committed, let's do it all. And it seems unworkable. There was also sort of the practical, people like to have the convenience and the accessibility of water bottles. Uh, including folks who come from out of town, landscapers, et cetera. We don't have a lot of great water filtration around, water fountains around in town. If we were to ban them, uh, that was another concern. I know that there was also concern that some towns that had approved them had since rescinded them. I'm not exactly sure why, but they had. So those were the pros, uh, or the, the cons maybe, that were in the three vote. On the sort of the, the two vote, uh, Mr. Plex and I, we, we appreciated um, what they said. I won't speak for Mr. Plex, I'll speak for myself, but you know, I I appreciate the sentiments of my colleagues and where they're coming from. I understand uh, why they're saying what they're saying. At the same time, I appreciate um, the sentiments of the advisory committee too, where it's a start. We know that we have to get serious about protecting our environment. And I have personally done the Earth Day cleanup a lot, and there's just a whole bunch of trash, particularly water bottles all lining Cohasset streets. It's not great. And I do a lot of, um, of the sorting returnables at the RTF through the scouts. My children are, my son is a boy scout. And they're not returnable. And so you can't repurpose them that way either. We sort a huge amount of water bottles out that just go into the plastic recyclable. But I'm glad people are recycling, for sure. So I think that um, again, it's a start. I take the comments of my colleagues on the three side. You know, I think it will be interesting to see what happens at town meeting.
That's what, at the end of the day, it's going to be the, the folks at town meeting that make this decision. So uh, so you've had two, yeah, again, I, I robust conversations, uh, and I, uh, and that's Article twenty-four, which would ban the single-use uh, plastic water bottles, non-carbonated, non-flavored water, uh, less than a gallon. So the final article is Article twenty-five, which was a citizen's petition on town hall rehab. And um, both the select board and advisory committee voted unanimously, and there was one abstention on advisory, but that had nothing to do with the merits, it had to do with the potential conflict. Not to recommend this article. And again, I'll, I'll have both of you speak to this. The, the, the key elements of this are really addressed earlier now in the capital plan for one. Uh, the other, I think that there's been some concerns about what the actual costs for this are. And I think that's one of the questions that, um, that proponents have been asked in lots of public forums. As I say that, I'll turn it over to uh, Jean Haley Dipold first. The select board actually has a written statement in the warrant about this. And then the advisory, uh, for Jean Estino, Jean Haley Dipold.
Um, thank you, Chris. So the select board does have a written statement in the warrant and while we appreciate the spirit behind the citizens petition here. We have met with the petitioner and on several occasions, actually. And during that time, I think we've had a number of questions that have remained unanswered, both in terms of the cost estimates, how we'll, how, how we will comply with applicable government laws. And, and other thing, and there's no funding source. So if town meeting seeks to pass this, that's fine. What are you going to cut? And if you're going to tap into our reserve funds, whether it's the general reserve fund or the reserve money and capital stabilization that we use to sort of balance projects out as we move throughout the year, then we should do so knowing the impact of what other projects may be. And, and again, to date, and we're a week away from town meeting, we um, have yet to hear any funding source identified by any of the petitioners, despite repeatedly asking them to identify one. And so, um, both in terms of the the estimates we think are way off, um, for some of these as originally presented, and even as they've evolved, there's no funding source behind what's being proposed. Although, like I said, we have subsequently worked with the petitioner on things like the roof that we uh, previously discussed in Article eight to begin a plan there. But what we don't want to do is start doing all this sort of ad hoc, random work, and then go in a totally different direction and keep throwing, you know, good money after bad. We're trying to avoid that scenario right now because we've lived that, that road too long with town hall. So where the select board has um, landed as of this point right now is that after meeting with the petitioner, as well as the other groups that I was um, talking about earlier, the nonprofits that are interested in this other project that differs from the citizen petition. The select board is still figuring out what makes sense, if anything, on that front, but is, you know, trying to listen to everyone while trying to get the, the actual details on what's being proposed. And I, I think it's fair to say that there's a lot more work that needs to be done, including on questions such as relocation, the cost. And it, it just, there's a huge amount of moving pieces. So it's really just premature and at the same time, I think the select board is going to continue working with the petitioner, as well as other stakeholders from all of our long-term nonprofits to see if we can work together that would result in a solution that would have broad community consensus, because that's really what we need for town hall at this point. We need to figure out broad community consensus. I, I think that um, that's what the select board is trying to move towards. And we'll be interested to see the reaction at town meeting. What, what I will say is we have asked our town staff to prepare a what's the minimal amount of repairs we can do to the town hall? And the number we've come back with is eight to ten million dollars. Because once you start peeling off one piece of the onion, you have to peel off other pieces based on applicable construction and accessibility and fire suppression requirements. And so you start adding those up. And even with a town hall that essentially looks very similar to what we have now cosmetically, you're still looking at eight to ten million dollars. And so not only And so not only is there just a reality to that price tag and whether the town will want that to still look at that, essentially the same building. Um, but just the high cost of what that construction means. So these are all sort of the factors that are playing behind, what are we going to do with town hall? And once, if we go down the sort of the citizens' petition, then you're, you're really starting to peel back on a project that is a um multimillion-dollar project, even to do a minimal repair that's going to land you over eight million dollars just for the minimal repairs. Um, and and that's what our diligence has found to date. So um, we're really trying to kick the tires hard on, is that the right thing for the town? And if not that, then what? So we're working through everything, but right now, I think that where the select board is, is that we've already um put forward in Article eight, the requested repairs to town hall. Those are the repairs that we think are reasonable that will allow us the flexibility to consider all of these options without locking the town in and potentially throwing good money after bad in a sort of not thought-through minimal repair project.
Okay, uh, thank you. And Gina Stino from the advisory committee.
Um, and again, advisory voted not to recommend approval by a vote of seven zero with one abstention. Um, we did invite one of the petitioners to come and do a presentation to us. But when we saw what they were presenting, we realized that we had already been discussing all of these items. So we really felt like their petition was not needed because we're working towards solutions for, for example, the roof. Um, and then we know that the sprinkler system is a legality that is needed, so clearly we would have to do something about that. Um, it's uncomfortable in town hall on any given warm day, and even sometimes in the winter, it's too hot in there. So we understand. The one thing that we didn't really talk at length about was re-leveling the main entry brick walkway. Because there are too many other big things that are needed before we start doing cosmetic things. And that to us was fairly cos- pretty much cosmetic. Um, there is a way for people who are, who have disabilities to get into the building in more than one place. So we didn't, as I said, we didn't really get into that. We did struggle with the fact that the select board had made a statement, and maybe we should explain. And then one member said, why don't we just vote? So we all felt strongly. And then we did invite the petitioner back again for a second conversation. And he did agree that we were already discussing some of the items that were on their list. So we agreed to disagree with the need for this petition.
Okay, um, I think that's, uh, I think you get the flavor of both the select board and the advisor committee on this. Uh, both unanimous recommendation is not not to support this article. Uh, and that is our, the twenty-five article warrant for annual town meeting uh, Monday, June third, seven P M. at the Sullivan Gymnasium in the back of the middle high school. Um, any, so uh, any closing words from either one of you? We'll just, we'll just see everybody, we'll see everybody at the town meeting. This is the ultimate in local democracy. Everyone gets to 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 come, to hear their, have their voice heard, to have their questions answered, and in fact, uh, do their homework in advance. There's a lot of materials uh in advance. So on the town's website, there's a lot of materials. The warrant itself has a lot of information in it. Uh, there's a lot of meetings you can watch, a lot of materials you can read. Um, and uh, you know, so we'll, we'll see everybody uh, Monday, June third. Jean?
I would just say, if folks have questions, they should reach out. Um, our names are on the Cohasset Town website. If, you know, there's a particular issue, you should feel free to reach out. If we don't know the answers, we probably will know someone who does. Um, or maybe there is no answer, and that's a question for town meeting as well. But um, uh, certainly feel free to reach out and contact us. And uh, here, this is a, this is a place where every vote really does count. So hopefully.
All good points, Jean. Thank you.
So again, you have two great resources. Thank you both, Jean and Jean, for your time tonight and walking through the warrant. Uh, and this culminates really a months-long conversation. A lot of time and energy has gone into this. And it's a warrant really crafted by the residents of the town. I mean, uh, staff most certainly participates in all of it. But this is uh, the implementation of the vision of the community, represented uh, right here by the advisor committee, the select board, the chairs of each. Uh, thank you both for joining us tonight. And thank you all for watching. For more information, again, give Jean and Jean a call or any of their colleagues. Watch the meetings, uh, read some of the materials. See you June third, seven P M. at the Sullivan Gymnasium. Thanks, everybody.